Call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for 6:00 PM, Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. Someone in the back room calling roll? Brian, okay.
Yes.
Brian, could you call the roll, please?
Yeah. Chair Quilisi?
Here.
Vice Chair Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
Here.
And Commissioner Starkweather?
Here. Thank you.
Thank you all. We have a quorum. And for the pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Murphy, if you'd lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. It's time for public communications, the time set aside during the planning commission meeting for people to discuss items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. So Brian, I do either of you plan to speak on other than an agenda item? Okay. So no one here present. Brian, do we have anyone in the waiting room with a raised hand?
No, there's no one online.
All right. Very good. Then we will dispense with public communications and go to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the planning commission, September 7th this year. Any commissioners with refinements? I added one in the discussion of site visits and ex parte contacts. It mentioned the tours that we all had at 1104 North Signal, but did not mention no ex parte contacts otherwise.
Oh, okay.
So I just suggested that that phrase be added to that paragraph. Anything else?
Uh, yeah, the one on love social, where is that? Is that in our minutes? I mean, I'm looking at the wrong one. Oh, second one. It doesn't actually state what the motion was on item whatever, three. There was a motion made seconded to-
To continue off calendar.
Yeah, but we had specific things in that motion. One was to have them have, um, and they could do one, uh, one, uh, event a year and-
A month.
A month. No, it was a year.
No, a month.
Oh, month, sorry, sorry. One of, I can't remember what, maybe you can remember, but it's, there was a specific set of things we wanted you guys to do, to look at. One was one event a month, one was to have some kind of monitoring device at the meeting, and the third was-
Hours.
An hours at night, uh, be done by-
Eight hours.
Nine o'clock. And, and an annual review. I think there were four things.
Okay.
Can we correct it to do that?
Yes, and then also to, for staff to get together with the applicant and then come back here with the-
Right.
Yeah, so-
Right. That, that part is in there.
Okay.
So I-
You'd prefer to see the four conditions added-
I think so, yes.
To the motion. Okay. I can live with that. Any other refinements from commissioners? Then a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I move that we approve this, these minutes as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Brian, would you call the roll on approval of the minutes of September 7th as amended?
Yeah. Quilisi?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yep.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Commissioner Trent?
Uh, no ex parte contacts, but I'm familiar with the site.
Okay. Commissioner Bennett?
I'm familiar with the site and no ex parte contact.
Mr. Starkweather?
Ditto.
Same here.
Okay. Well, I have to confess, I had an ex parte contact. I walked over to just look around the site yesterday, and the staff called out Jolene to speak with me, and she gave me a walking tour of the facility. She said that, that she did not expect to be here at the meeting tonight, that someone else would be presenting the case for this permit, or a series of permits, whatever. And, and she wasn't even absolutely sure who had signed the request initially. She said the new executive director came on in May, and she thought the request had come in earlier. But we didn't discuss the details of the case, or why they wanted. I noticed that, that part of the parking area, um, that's proposed as paved in some fashion here is currently not, but it's being used as a parking area. And we did mention that in our discussion. But, um, I just wanted to see the place. I'd been over there once, I think, maybe 10 years ago. We don't have any dogs and no plans to get a dog, so, uh, that's my ex parte contact. All right. Then moving on to the public hearing item, a design review permit for the, excuse me, Ventura County Humane Society complex at 402 Bryant Street. Staff, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Quilisi and commissioners. So the planning commission is considering the approval of this project because a design review permit is being requested and which is also required for all applications for construction of any structure that affects the exterior elevation of a building other than a single-story, single-family residence. Just thought I would explain that this time. The project, the specific project request for the humane society is for a 20, approximately 2,300 square foot building addition and 30 additional parking spaces. That's this, in your staff report, you may see that there's one fewer parking spaces when you see the PowerPoint later because the applicant is now eliminating, sorry, eliminating one of those spaces for the installation of a trash enclosure. In 2010, the planning commission approved a 2,500 square foot visitor center and expansion of a spade neuter clinic on this property. The existing onsite parking area is paved and partially striped for 28 spaces. The proposed parking area will be improved with gravel. Um, it has a concrete curb as well, and an ADA ramp, and now 29 parking spaces instead of the 30 that's in your staff report. Per the municipal code, the parking spaces and maneuvering areas in a parking lot are required to be paved with an all-weather surface approved by the director. Permeable paving materials are encouraged in low-use areas, and again, that would be approved by the director. However, this is being forwarded to the planning commission because we're, you're looking at a DRP, or you're considering a DRP. So the proposed material here is gravel, which would be a, um, which would be a pervious material. The site currently has one curb cut for ingress and one, or and egress on Bryant Street, and the proposal includes an additional curb cut approximately 30 feet away. As proposed, the current curb cut would be used for ingress only, and the proposed for egress only. And the conditions of approval that are in Attachment A, that's your draft resolution, include a condition requiring that there be striping and signage that indicates exit only and entrance only. There's a misspelling in that condition. It says exist instead of exit. With the addition of the required number of onsite parking spaces, 52 spaces would be re, let's see, with the addition, 52 spaces would be required, but 57 now are being proposed with the additional 30, 29, sorry. The site is currently landscaped. The applicant is proposing some landscape improvements near the, within the new parking area, and there's a valley oak there that is existing, and it's proposed to be protected. And all other trees, except for one that is not a protected tree, all of the trees would be protected. The one that's not, and I'm using the two words, protected, meaning that they're oaks or sycamores, that's one way that they're protected, but also I'm trying to indicate that they'll be protected during construction. But one will be removed, but it is not an oak or a sycamore. And an additional sycamore and two cork oaks are proposed to be incorporated into the existing, um, tree grouping that's on the south side of the parking lot.
This is new planting?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I was asked prior to the meeting if there's bike parking available, bicycle parking, and I do not see it on the plan, however, there's a condition in the, in the proposed conditions of approval that they, um, that the applicant provide bicycle parking and that it come back during, um, the plan check process. And when it's reviewed, that they, that that will be provided.
Okay.
And with that, we do have an applicant here, and we have a PowerPoint from them when they have their presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Any questions for staff from the commission?
What condition is the bicycle one? What, you said that?
One thing I forgot to add is that staff is recommending approval, and the bicycle parking is... Am I looking at the wrong?
It's a condition number three, page three-
Thank you.
Of Attachment A.
Yes. Page three of seven, Attachment A. And staff is recommending that two bicycle parking spaces be provided.
Why so few?
You know, um, my thought is that the code requires X number of spaces recommends per square footage. I, I, you know what, I'm gonna let Lucas answer that question.
It's the minimum requirement. That's really what it boils down to. So if it's two, that's what we're looking at, although I do believe that the architect will speak to that as well.
So what is the minimum requirement based on square footage? What is it based on? What, the two, just two for any commercial development?
Two for any new development, I believe, is the, is the requirement.
Seems a little bit outdated, given that we have, uh, you know, motorized bikes and so forth, and we're trying to promote this, but-
It might be a change to Title 10 that we recommend to the city council.
Could be a deeper dive, yeah.
But it's in Title 10 somewhere. Do we have the permission to require more?
This commission certainly has the ability to, to condition that.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Trent?
Yeah, yeah, quick question. So I know that, um, permeable paving materials is put in the parking development standards for, for water, um, but I was just wondering if the applicant has any, well, I guess this is for the applicant, not for, well, this one's for staff. Is there any requirement in, um, the amendment around water mitigate or water collection, gray water collection, stormwater collection, is there anything like that? Any requirements for that?
I would, I would ask the architect.
Okay.
They're probably thinking about that as well.
Okay. All right. Good deal.
Any other questions?
Are, okay. So it says the-
Page number?
Page two of four, uh, parking lot development standards, the proposed permeable paving material for the expanded parking lot is being referred to the planning commission for review and consideration. That's us tonight, isn't it?
Two of four.
Oh, two of four, the staff report.
That's us now?
Yes.
Okay. And there was some statement made about low use. Is that, is there a regulation about this, or where, where did that come from? The idea that permeables should only be for low use?
That language is from, um, our municipal code, and also it's, the reason it's being referred to the planning commission is because you're reviewing a, a design review permit, otherwise, um, this would be reviewed by the director, or determined by the director.
Correct. And just to touch base on the bicycle parking again, there is no minimum requirement. The two that we've identified, um, from staff's recommendation is really kind of the floor, if you will. There is no maximum here either. It's really at the whim of the review authority, is the way the code reads.
Oh, boy, on our whim. So let me just understand this low use thing. Is there some, uh, engineering reason why permeable would only be for low use?
Is there an engineering reason for low-
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Uh, there was a mention that you would generally only use permeable pavement, paving.
Well, it says it's encouraged for use in low-use areas.
Low-use areas. Why is that so? Why only in low-use areas?
My understanding is that it's not an engineering thing as much as a, um, it's, it's messy.
Messy?
Well, if it's a high-trafficked area, then you're potentially dragging dirt or mud.
So you're considering just gravel to be permeable, but there's other types of permeable surfaces that aren't gravel, that are hard.
Sure.
So we could, I don't know if we can require that, but I mean, that seems like, um, something we ought to be moving towards, actually, as a town.
So I believe the applicant, um, I believe the applicant has proposed gravel, and that's why gravel is in this particular project, but if you were to condition it to be a different material, the planning commission has that purview.
Yeah, but I also think it's probably important to hear from the applicant.
I just, I'm just asking what the rule is, or what flexibility we have.
Right.
You can't push a wheelchair through gravel, so.
Right, but the, the ADA accessibility would require it to be a different standard than what, what the gravel is. The ADA accessibility can't be gravel.
And they do have other parking that's existing that's paved and striped.
Right.
Uh-huh.
Any more? All right, let's hear from the applicant then. Please step up, sir.
Good evening, I'm Mark Whitman, the architect for the project. Thanks for having us here tonight, members of the commission, Commissioner Quilisi and the members of staff. Appreciate you hearing this project tonight. I'm here, um, tonight with Judy Diaz, she's a board member of the Humane Society, and she's gonna talk a little bit, bit about the reasoning, a reason for building the project, and also Bill Mallett, who's a landscape architect, who can, I'll have him talk about the, um, landscape design. Uh, but before we get into the PowerPoint, Judy actually has another, um, appointment, and, um, I, I told her I'd let her go first, and, and so she, and he asked questions about that, and so she's gonna talk about, um, the purpose of the building.
Thank you. Thank you for considering our project. The addition to the building, the existing admin building, is simply we've kind of run out of room. We've added, um, additional programs. I think the building was originally built in 2011, and we just hired another humane officer. We need the meeting space for our education program. We have a summer camp, adventure camp for youth, and it would be nice for them to be able to have, you know, some of the activities in a climate-controlled environment, instead of everything outside during the summer up here in Ojai. Additional humane officer, and, uh, we're looking for a development director for, to improve our fundraising activities. I mean, that's pretty much, you know, we've run out of space, but if you have any questions for the use, um, I'd like to-
You mentioned you had a summer camp. I thought I read somewhere that you have interns too. What, one, how long is your summer camp, and how many, what ages, and how long does it last?
Um, the school age, uh, and I, I don't know the ages. We have a humane educator. Sometimes we do, you know, during COVID, of course, we did them on Zoom in the schools, but, um, I don't know exactly how many in the, in the summer camp, just during the summer, and, you know, some of it's hands-on, out, you know, out in the kennels with the animals, and then some of the education, we try to teach humane education, and also how animals can exist, you know, our pets existing with wildlife, and, you know, we don't, we feed our pets, we don't feel, feed wildlife and stuff, you know, programs like that.
And do you also have interns during the year?
We have volunteers, adults, and, um-
Teenagers?
-youth, all year round, because we couldn't do our programs without volunteers. And that room also will serve for orientation for new volunteers.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for this part of the applicant's presentation?
Uh, just a clarifying question. Um, in the, um, the resolution says that this is for, um, emergency center, is that the case?
We also have, um, during some of the local emergencies for the fires, um, we assisted with evacuations for residents and their animals. We have several trailers for horses, so if you recall, we had the, uh, day fire in 2006, the Thomas Fire in 2017. You know, not everyone can take their animals to wherever they relocate, so we assist in evacuation, and we can take on additional animals. We even went as far as Malibu, you know, county line Malibu, because we serve the whole county. And, um, you know, and if it ever rains, we'll assist in flood, evacuations for floods, because, as you know, the East End has, you know, flooding issues.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Bennett? Nothing at the moment?
No, I'm a volunteer, so I'm familiar.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
All right. Thank you very much, ma'am.
So, um, yeah, we can get the PowerPoint back up. The project, um, the existing structures that are there, there's a, um, there's a large kennel structure on the, sort of on the east side of the property, not, you know, there's, there's corrals and, you know, for horses, but kennels are for the dogs. And then, um, existing administration building, or the, or the existing clinic, which they do a lot of this, you know, spade neutering, I think is mostly what they do, but they have other, um, activities there as well, and then the, uh, the, the existing administration building. The two, um, you know, the, um, the clinic building was a, I think it was Frank Lloyd Wright's grandson, or something like, designed that, and it's, it's very expressive and got that curved shape, which I love. And then the, uh, the administration, the newer administration building is more like a Frank Lloyd Wright prairie style, and, um, and, and, and so that's the existing architecture as it stands now, and, and, um, the, the architecture in the back is not really relevant. But, uh, we can go to the next slide. Here's the existing, um, administration building. It has a fairly small, um, conference room, could seat, I think it has seats for about eight people. So that's where their, you know, indoor meeting room is now. Um, and so when they have large groups, they, they're outside, and the, you know, partially covered patio space to the, um, east there, yes. Okay. So our proposal is to come off of the west side of the administration building, as an addition to the administration building, and, um, it's, you know, serves the purposes that Judy spelled out. But the, uh, you know, the orientation of the buildings are such that, where we kind of, you know, as we add on to the building, you know, to that side, which was a natural place to add on to, it runs into the setback of the, um, the property line and setback. So we had to kind of skew the, um, the, the building, and, uh, and so this kind of, the form of it is because of the property line and, and the spaces that are, that were required. Then it flows out into, um, there's that beautiful, um, valley oak, um, that we're, we're preserving, and, um, the trees that were, you know, were taken out, I think they're like some kind of pine tree of some type, I don't know the name of them, but there's a couple of pine trees there that were right in the footprint of the building. So I'll let Bill talk about the, the landscaping, if you're ready to do that, Bill?
Yeah. Before we get to that-
Sure.
Do any commissioners have questions? Please go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. We've got a, a couple of sets of plans here which, um, are not, um, consistent, um, and in looking at your, um, A, uh, 0.0, um, the parking spaces are, um, parallel to each other on the left hand, on the Bryant Street, um, side of the property, and they run parallel all the way back. And then on your, uh, uh, your, your chart marked TPP1.0, this is Attachment D, page four, they, they actually show them coming together, and I was wondering which of those two it is.
Yeah, I think now the previous somehow they got in there. It's, it's the parallel scheme that, that we're proposing.
My other questions were actually based on the same document, which has, um, uh, it looks as if it may have signage which indicates in and out in both locations.
Yeah.
And the presentation, as it started, said that one was going to be inbound and one was going to be outbound.
Well, that's, that's staff, um, idea, and I think it's a good idea, um, and so we're willing to incorporate that into the design, the one way.
Okay. So you're just saying, ignore this, um-
Yeah.
It's part of the tree, tree protection plan?
Oh, that's, so that's an older plan that got slipped in, the landscape plan.
Yeah, the spaces are even numbered differently on it.
Yeah, and that explains the numbering issue as well.
So we should ignore all this?
The tree protection plan, the layout of that was, um, early on, and then we, since then, we, um, revised the plans, and the tree protection plan did not get updated.
Still protecting the trees, but the parking spaces are different.
Right.
So this is all gonna be in your PowerPoint? The change, or?
Yeah, the, the plans, uh, the updated plans, um, they're, they're, the architectural plans are, are correct. It's just the tree protection plan did not get, uh, it was like an older plan that, that didn't get updated, so, um, Bill can talk to that, but I would like to come back after Bill's talking and talk a little bit more about the architecture and the reason for the design that we came up with.
I, I was curious regarding the parking, both, both the tree protection plan and the original, or the, the front piece of it, shows a break in the, in the, let's call it north-facing parking. There's about 20 spaces there, and then a break of about 25 feet, and none of their six or eight spaces.
Right.
What was the purpose of that?
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with it.
You can see it there.
Oh, yeah, well, we're leaving a, a space for the tree, so we're kind of leaving a nice landscaped opening, um, you know, that's, that, so we're not paving right up to the tree.
Okay.
So that's just a driveway, not long there?
Right.
It's, it's a way to turn before you get all the way to the end to go to the parking spaces that are proposed new.
You've got this space right here, the narrow way, so that's not the break from the tree, uh, this is one break from the tree.
Right.
This is, um-
Oh.
It's continued driving around.
Yeah, that's existing, um, that's an existing in and out, um, that's part of the existing paved parking plan, so we're maintaining, we're, that's, um, we're not changing that.
I must, I must have missed it. I didn't recall seeing that, that little protected six or eight spaces with what looks like a curb around it. I was there yesterday.
Oh, yeah, it's there.
Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, I just had a question on the, um, on the site plan, site plan notes. Is there any, I just didn't see anything relating to, uh, stormwater collection or gray water collection. Do you guys have any plans for that?
Um, yes, the, we have a civil engineer involved, and they, um, did a calculation for the stormwater retention and the permeable paving, and, you know, that's part of that. And then, um, Bill can address the area, there's an area in the front that they're gonna do a bioswale, or not, or a swale kind of a construction there, but, um, I was, I was just talking to Judy about that, um, earlier before the meeting, you know, about a gray water system and maybe some underground, um, cisterns, and she said, it's all budget.
Yeah.
Depends on the budget. She, they would, the board would love to do all those, those things, and water retention and, and all that, and, um, you know, there's only one sink that the gray water system would work for. I don't think there's much expense there, so I'm, you know, I'm sure they can, they can, um, do a gray water for that one sink, whether or not, they can do it for the rest of the project, existing, that's probably not feasible, but I think a gray water system, definitely.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, one, one other- Yeah, one, one other question, which is about the gravel. I'm surprised, and this may be a question for the landscape architect, that you're using gravel as opposed to some other permeable parking area. As I would think that small dogs have a hard, can have a hard time walking across gravel, depending upon what the, what the dimension of the, of the gravel is. But I know when we have small dogs visit us, people have to pick their dogs up to walk across the gravel driveway that we have. So it's, it's, I found it unusual that you did have gravel in here, given that you, your, part of your clientele base may have a problem walking across that gravel.
Yeah, again, I think that's a budget.
Cats probably have the same trouble as small dogs. A lot of cats there, yeah.
Yeah, it's a budget-driven decision. As, they're, the, the existing pavement is gravel. And they are parking there now. So we're just kind of organizing that parking and striping it and just kind of maintaining the existing gravel that's there now.
Are you planning to stripe the gravel?
Well, I think we're gonna try to do some kind of marker, maybe not stripe because it's not really practical, but some kind of marker system to indicate the, the parking spaces.
Does something different like DG break the budget?
Do, why don't we let Bill talk about, I, I would like to come back and talk about the specifics of the architecture.
Okay.
And I, and I know I bypassed the bike, I know there's bike racks. I heard the question about that. We are, there's existing bike racks that are there and we're adding to that. The, the existing bike racks have three rings and we're gonna do another one to match it. And then there's also a trash enclosure that, that we're proposing in one of the parking spaces right there. But right now, the bins are kind of just sitting outside. So I think we're addressing that issue as well.
So you're, you're adding 2,400 feet and three more bike things. But it seems like if you've got kids all summer long and you have kids coming out there to volunteer, we ought to be encouraging more bicycling rather than having their parents drive them out there and use up greenhouse gas and make more traffic that people complain about. And we're, the, the city is trying to move towards getting people on bicycles. So I, I would, I don't know that that's gonna be enough bicycles since you had a whole summer camp.
Maybe Judy can address that as well.
Yeah, well, we're right by the bike path, so it, it would make sense. And, I mean, we are definitely in agreement of that. And I think, you know, we, we have the space for it. You know, and again, we're, bike path is right there and you can keep the kids out of traffic, which would be my first concern.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, whatever fits, whatever you want us to do, we're agreeable to that. And then to address the, the animals, we do have the paved area. And that's also where we have the ADA accessible ramp. So generally, when folks come to the shelter, they can just pull right up to the entryway and there's ingress and egress for animals. And generally, people that aren't going to be with the animals can use the gravel parking area. So when, when I go there for meetings, I park in the gravel so that all those spaces are available for people bringing animals.
That's my thing was off, sorry. Turned it off.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I guess this is an appropriate question, going back to staff again. Does ADA allow a gravel parking area?
Your ADA spaces, if you look at the site plan, are already identified on an existing, yeah. It's not gravel.
Oh, the blue painted spaces, you mean?
Correct.
And that's the only place that you have to have hard surface appropriate for wheelchairs or walkers or whatever?
Right. I think it's, I forget the standard, but I think it's one space for every, every 25 or 50.
Every 25, that's what we had up on Matilahaw.
Yep, there you go.
And so there are, with, with 57 spaces, do you round up or round down? Do we need two or three handicap parking spaces in this plan?
It could potentially be three. And if it's three, that'll be something that building will be addressing as a part of their, as part of their conditions.
Okay, and, I mean, it's a matter, it, it looks like there's enough hardscape parking spaces now that it's a matter of restriping if it, if it's three.
Potentially, yeah.
Okay. Now, let's hear from the landscape architect. Robert Plant by name?
Yeah.
Good evening, Phil Mallett, the landscape architect. Let's see, a couple of questions I can speak to. I'm also the arborist on the project, so I did the tree protection plan. That was done early on and there's been some changes to the landscape plan, but nothing that impacted the tree protection plan. All the mitigation for tree protection stayed the same. So no, no impact to that. But the site plan did change slightly. Let's see, oh, as far as gravel and impermeable paving and pervious paving, I think this was a budget-driven decision. And permeable paving with permeable pavers is substantially more expensive than gravel. And then there was a question about DG versus gravel. DG is not really an all-weather surface. If we ever do get rain again someday, DG can become quite muddy in a continued rain event, even though it is a compacted surface. So it's not really a good thing for parking lots per se, especially a high-use parking lot.
I was curious because I presume that the sidewalk down Ventura Street here was put in by the city and it's DG.
Yes.
And?
With a stabilizer.
I have some paths of that sort in my yard. And with stabilizer, it's pretty stable in the?
But not for car traffic, not for vehicle traffic.
Okay.
So, I mean, you can drive on it, but it, it can be, definitely become a problem with?
Turning sprays it, yeah, okay.
The landscape that we're proposing is all very low water use. Using natives, Mediterranean plant material. We are trying to do rain capture on the site. There should be very little water running off this site. Almost all of it will be maintained onsite for infiltration with the permeable paving in the landscape areas.
Is that spelled out in writing anywhere? What's your plan to do?
Yes, it actually is in, in our program narrative. I don't have my glasses on, but I think it's written in there. On sheet L 1.0.
That's attachment B, that talks about the structure.
You're talking about on your plan?
Yes.
What's the number?
Uh, sheet L 1.0.
I don't see that kind of numbering. I see A 01 or 1 of 6. How is that, I don't see that numbering system.
We don't, we don't have that plan in our packets.
Oh, okay.
Does staff have that?
I do, no, I do not have that.
Bill, could you read that? What does it say specifically?
I don't have my gla, I left my glasses in the car and I was.
Mara, if you, if you could.
Shouldn't have to incorporate that into it.
So the Humane Society Design incorporates the City of Ojai's adopted landscape guidelines, which include the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, MWLO, and corresponding water-efficient irrigation system. The landscape design at the existing facility includes a building addition with walkways, more defined overflow parking area and associated landscape. The, a water-efficient landscape irrigation system with a weather-based irrigation controller will be included in the system design. Drought-tolerant plant material suitable for growing under oaks and low maintenance have been selected.
Okay, what are you reading from? Is that?
I am reading from an overall landscape plan.
But we don't have copies of it.
That is dated on July 13th, 2022. And I cannot speak at this moment as to why it's not in your packet. I apologize.
Okay.
You probably did. I, I really don't have an answer to that right now.
It's appropriate that we condition it that the landscape plan, as submitted in July, be incorporated in the planning package. Because one of the conditions says you've got to build this in substantial compliance with the planning package. And I think that's something that we want to have included, for sure.
Well, doesn't someone have to determine whether it actually is in compliance with the?
Well, if it calls out compliance with MWLO, that's a whole body of code.
Okay, but they've actually done a plan based on that. And I would assume somebody would have to review. Is that something you would review to make sure it's actually meets the code?
Yeah, during, during the building, the building review phase, when they submit for their building plans, that's when we review it. We check the boxes. Identifying that they're compliant with MWLO is one step. So they're saying, yes, we're compliant. But there are a number of steps that they have to then follow.
That's part of your standard procedure, does not need to be part of the conditions of approval? Because it's something that you?
I would, I would add a condition. I know he's, Bill's identified that it's within the planning package. I would add a condition if it's with the will of this body that identifies compliance and to specify the code section, as we typically do.
That's 10212 somewhere.
Yeah, I?
The landscaping plan is in there.
Yeah, once we're done with this PowerPoint, I'll, I'll dig up the particular title, chapter, and article.
Think that'd be good.
Make sure we've got that covered.
Add to the conditions of approval, just to be sure. What, what kind of a tree are you taking out and what are you putting in?
So we're removing a pine tree that's not in very good condition and probably not appropriate for that site. And we are replacing with sycamores and oaks.
I did notice a large pine tree when I was there yesterday. Make a great torch if we have a fire.
Is it a cork oak?
Yes.
And what is the difference between a cork, if I could ask the question?
Sure.
The genus is Quercus.
Cork, yeah, cork, genus is Quercus, what's the?
Suber is the species, Quercus suber. It's a cork oak, it's, it's, it's a, our native oak is the Quercus agrofolia and the Quercus lobata. So this is not a native oak, but it's similar and it's actually a more interesting tree. It's a Mediterranean tree and will do very well. It's actually the tree that they get cork from to make cork for wine bottles.
For wine bottles. Drought tolerant, I presume?
Yes, it is, very drought tolerant.
Probably have a lot of them in Italy and Spain.
Very similar climate.
Just a clarifying question. So Mark, Mark mentioned there was two pine trees that are gonna be removed? And you said it was just one?
Yes, I think there's one larger one and one small one.
So two total?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Any other questions for the landscape architect? We'll come back to adding the condition of approval. Was there anything else you wanted to show us? That you have some low-growing plants there in addition to the trees? That going in this, this new picnic area?
Yes, in the area on the south side there, yes. So it's low Mediterranean planting in there, in fairly sparse. It's not a very dense planting. Again, to save on water, my thing is you can plant a thousand drought-tolerant plants and it's no longer drought tolerant. So you have to limit the number of plants also if you want it to be drought tolerant. Plants that can also stand up to dog traffic, let's say. So appropriate for that.
Yes.
He wants to speak.
Yes, sir, please.
This is the location of the valley oak, correct?
Correct.
Is there anything in there currently? I don't think there is, right?
No, it's, it's just dirt and I think there's a picnic table or something underneath.
Okay, so there is, okay. I was gonna say, I thought I remember seeing a picnic table, but I want to make sure. Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Whitman, I guess you're back on.
I was just noticing this plan is showing the three required handicap spaces. And so there is three in this, in this plan, which I think is required by code. It's like one, one per 20 or one, one per 25, yeah.
So you're saying, you're saying the plan has three handicap spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
So we talked about the, you know, the, the, the program and the, and the rooms required. There's also a handicap bathroom that were, it's part of the plan and, and a storage room for tables and chairs and things for, for meetings. You know, I think one of the main purposes is, is for a meeting room for when they have, you know, there's, how many people at a time, Judy? 20 or 30 people are, are, you know, onsite and so they need a space. So we actually had, we're designing the meeting room to kind of flow outside as well so people can, it's kind of an indoor-outdoor meeting kind of dynamic there. Where, where if you had even more than that, you can have a big group and someone could be speaking and they could be seen from the outdoor patio and?
Mark?
Yes.
What is the covering over the outdoor space that you flow out to? Is it rain-proof?
Yes, it's, it's a continuation of the roof and it's a solid roof. And I, I think our further slides will demonstrate that. But it's a covered, like an outdoor patio space.
And, and the patio itself will be what?
Well, that, it'll be a solid surface. We haven't specified that as of yet, but it will be like a, probably concrete surface.
You're, you're actually removing some of the covering of outdoor space next to the current administration building, right?
Yes, there is an existing lunch space there that I don't think is used very much. But there is a little, a small outdoor patio.
Outdoor covered. And so you're gonna remove that and then add more building and then more outdoor-covered?
Right.
To the left of that?
Yeah, which flows into the, the valley oak space. And so we're envisioning like a park-like space where, when people are bringing the, the animals or pets, the dogs, it'd be a, a place for them as well.
Okay. Any more questions?
Uh, going back to, sorry, can I talk? Uh, I was paying attention to something else. Going back to the gray water system, I was unclear. That was something you might do or something that would depend on the money? Or what was the story with that?
No, we, we made a decision tonight that we're gonna definitely do that, so. So, but it's not gonna be a big system because there's only one sink really that we can, maybe there's two sinks, maybe, maybe the bathroom sink as well we can attach to bathroom. And there's a little kitchenette that's part of the plan.
Okay, good, because I think that's something we ought to be encouraging, obviously, with every new building.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to ask staff, is, is gray water a building standard issue or is it an external appearance of the building and land use issue?
That's a question of mine. Uh, building will have standards for it. We can build in a condition for compliance with building standards pursuant to the gray water provision, if it, if it pleases the commission.
There, is there, is there a requirement in Title IX right now for gray water systems? Or just a description of them?
Description and, and kind of a, kind of a how-to in terms of parameters.
Okay. Just want to make sure that, that we're staying in the planning commission swim lane and not, not dictating?
Building?
The interior of the building per se.
Well, this is both interior and exterior gray water systems because they start in the interior and they go in the exterior. They're part of a landscaping thing in some ways.
It is, because it flows into, it's either visible or not visible. It could, it could be completely subterranean at the same time, so it's never even visible.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I think if?
Well, I'd like to talk about the architectural?
Sure.
You know, statement, that it's it's not matching the existing spaces. The two are not matching each other either, so it's a, so it's a third style that we're introducing. And it's mostly driven by environmental, it's like a, we're proposing a high-performance, you know, energy-efficient structure with a low-sloping roof. We plan on putting a hundred percent solar array on the roof of this that's facing south, so it'll be, it has perfect solar exposure for for full, the photovoltaic panels. And the, you know, we're proposing the embodied carbon, you know, to minimize that as much as possible. So we're we're expressing the wood structure, we're exposing that and we're making that a statement that, you know, wood is one of the best, you know, carbon sinks materials that is readily available. And so we're using that as, you know, kind of as the main structure. The ceiling is going to be a beautiful wood ceiling that's going to flow out to the outdoor porch. And so and we'll also incorporate other ideas such as insulation, using, you know, carbon neutral or or the, or the, there's a, there's a hempcrete that that's being used that actually is a carbon sink as well. And then low-carbon concrete and another idea, we're researching that and we're trying to make, you know, lower the embodied carbon as much as possible. We still haven't figured out how to get to zero yet, but with the the one hundred percent solar array and an all-electric building, we'll be able to get to zero carbon in the performance of the building.
Mark, does that solar array provide enough electricity for the rest of the building that you're attaching it to or to any of the other buildings?
That's what we're proposing, is it to be big enough to drive the entire facility, yes.
Oh, good.
You know, one of the, one of the no-no's for doing like a passive, I consider this a passive solar design as well with a, you know, large windows to create daylight, so you don't have to, so you can minimize the lighting inside. And the, we have the, the windows facing north, they're they're raised up above, like, like right at eye level, because that's where your parking is, right outside of those north-facing windows. So we didn't want to look out of the building and see cars in the parking area, but it is, I think you'll, Bill will look out and see the beautiful Topa Topa range, you know, from those buildings.
Sky, yeah.
And so that's, you know, part of the design. And then we have like a flat roof area in between, you know, the the wood, the low-pitch roof, just kind of create a transition space between the two structures. And so it's a, you know, got kind of a intermediate architecture there. We did some three D visuals of, look, we have some three D renderings to show you the, how it looks.
Is that an upcoming slide? Oh, I see.
Well, that's a cross-section showing the space. That's our trash enclosure that we're proposing on the, again, on the north side. They have like three existing bins that that we need to, you know, the large kind of six-foot bin, so I think that's enough space for it. And we talked about this already, but yeah, here's some visuals. We're hoping to create a, do like a natural stone curb around the gravel parking area, keep it real natural. And, you know, this is that park-like atmosphere that we're trying to create underneath the, I know that's not an oak in the rendering, but that's where the Valley Oak would be in.
On the left or on the right?
On the right, yes.
Not sure, is that, that picture there was the west side of the new building?
Yeah, that's the patio space that Judy was questioning. So it's a covered patio space, you know, where people can go outside and work and and they have, you know, we have bi-fold doors or sliding, or large sliding, I'm sorry, large sliding glass doors that have a nice indoor-outdoor flow from the indoor space to the outdoor space. Oh, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, you can, you can scan your, your phone and and you could do a virtual walk around the room with those barcode things. I think that 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 that's the end of the presentation there. You could see the high windows in that last, oh, we talked about the sustainability, you can see the high windows on the right side there that that instead of looking out into the cars, we're trying to-
Is that like a virtual drawing?
It's, yeah, it's a computer, three D.
Computer, okay.
Yeah, that, the, I got, I got these twenty-year-olds in my office who are just whizzes-
We can walk around in that thing now.
Right, with that scan, yeah, if you scan.
Virtually.
Yeah, you could, yeah.
All right. So you're you're planning the solar panel array to power the entire facility, but you're not giving up, either, either you're giving up the connection to Edison and you're putting in a big battery bank to handle things when the sun's down? Or you're maintaining the connection to Edison?
You know, the way that works, the billing works is that it's a net billing, so in the summertime, you're going to create way more power than 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 in the wintertime. And you get credit, so they, so they, as the meter goes backwards, you actually, you know, you gain credit and Edison keeps track of that for you. And then at the end of the year, they say, okay, you have a, and then your, our solar consultants would figure out what that zeroing out would be. And so it's not just at nighttime you use it, but in daytime you make it.
Yeah, and just to, I just had solar put on my, on my property and they don't let you cut the cord, essentially. Edison says, identifies, even if you have battery backup, they're not letting you cut the cord, essentially.
Same thing is true down at the sanitary district treatment facility, but there's a big Tesla battery bank there now. And so, and that's not for solar power. They're just buying electricity at night when it's cheap and storing up in the batteries and then using the batteries to run the facility during the day when the, when otherwise the electrons would be more expensive.
Yeah, I think, again, the budget's going to dictate this, but I think we'd like to do a big-
That'd be a nice thing to do, but it's, it's an expensive project.
Right, yeah.
You have, you have to be able to show a reasonable payback on it, you know. Okay, any more questions for the applicant?
No. What is the usual use of your, your parking lot? What, what percentage usually is used? Because a few times when I bicycle out there sometimes and I don't usually see a whole lot of cars in this big parking lot. So what is, what is the normal use?
Yeah, I mean, it isn't usually full. I think that there is a neighbor that has, what we have allowed to use the gravel parking space, you know, and and I don't know what business that is. Because we've, you know, we have the room, but if it, you know, dictates that we're going to need this parking for the addition, then that arrangement's going to have to change. But, you know, we haven't had the space to bring as many people to the facility. I mean, we had our ninetieth birthday bash and that brought people and we had Oliver's thirty-fifth birthday and that, you know, brought, not, not as many people because it was during the week. But we would like to do more, introduce the Humane Society to more, a larger donor base. And we just haven't had the facility to do so. So I would imagine that there would be, you know, more use, but not daily. What do you expect the timeframe on this project to be?
It's, this is where the trail is.
In terms of building, is, is, we're ready as soon as we go through the process. I mean, I don't know- How long does it take to build it?
Parking next to their spaces, yeah.
If if we got the, the green light, yeah, we need to do construction drawings and permits, probably about another six months before you break ground, another year on top of that to build it.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I, I was over there walking around yesterday and I noticed that the gravel parking area was full of cars and trucks. I don't know if it was all volunteers or if it was some of, some people patronizing your neighbor business or what, but it was full yesterday.
What is the neighbor business?
I don't know.
What's that storage outfit?
Condor storage. Condor, Condor is on the north side of this and they have, they have space to drive around by all of their storage spaces. I can't imagine that somebody would would park there and then walk over and go through the gate to Condor.
See, I, I believe, and I don't know whether it's Condor or not, but but I do know that Condor, for instance, will rent you RV parking spaces, boat parking spaces, and this is not part of their-
And that's on the northeast side of their property.
That's right.
It's even farther from this.
Yeah, it's, but it's, but it's not part of their circulation plan.
Right.
It's that parking storages, you know, got value to it as well and so it doesn't surprise me that you're taking some revenue off of your property.
You're actually taking revenue? You're renting it to other people?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Is that something that we-
I don't know if it, if we're getting revenue, I mean, I can find out, but I don't know.
Well, the, the parking requirements in the code say you have to have that many spaces available for your business, so.
Right, so I mean, that, you know, that would have to end, whatever that arrangement is.
Or maybe the difference between fifty-two and fifty-seven is still up for grabs.
Could be, the, there are no parking agreements that have been recorded on this site, so. If they are, it's a, it sounds like a friendly, yeah, you can use this space, is what it sounds like.
I, I think that that's what it is, I don't think it's a formal agreement. And and I, you know, when you're up there, you just sometimes will hear something anecdotally and it isn't something that's ever come up in a board meeting. I mean, that would be an executive director function.
Okay, well, you understand from the code what's required for parking for the Humane Society?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thing, okay. Any other questions for the applicants? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Brian, is there anyone in the waiting room that wishes to speak?
No, there's not.
Okay. Then we'll open and then close the public comment, is that the appropriate phrase for a public hearing as opposed to public communications at the beginning? Public comment, I think, okay. Then we will close that and we'll go to deliberations by the commission. Overall thoughts?
I mean, overall thoughts is, I like the project, I think, I like the permeable parking lot space, you know, gravel, I understand why. But I think overall, I think it's going to be a big plus for the Humane Society to have that additional space. You know, going to the visitor center prior, it is pretty small once you get a few people in there, so definitely needed. I like the idea that you guys are thinking about gray water, stormwater collection, that sort of thing, obviously, you know how important that is with our community. I like the solar, I think that's a great idea, too. And that's, that's really all I had.
Okay, Mr. Bennett?
Oh, I think it's, it's a good project and I think the architect's done a sympathetic job, given its context of the the new construction and I think it's fine.
Murphy?
I agree. I think that the added meeting room is hugely needed. They need a big room because right now they do their training and and stuff in a very small space. And the solar and the gray water are things that I really applaud and I'm looking forward to seeing what the landscaping is going to look like.
Okay, Mr. Sarkwether?
I'm in agreement with all those. I, I don't like the fact that we're requiring so many parking spaces that someone has enough spaces that they could be leasing to a neighboring property person. I think our ordinance is way off in terms of requiring those. A lot of towns also trade off parking spaces for bicycle racks to encourage more bicycling. Because every, almost every time I've been out there, it was not much in the way of people parking, so, you know, when we're requiring, of course, this is impervious, I mean, impervious, so it's a little better. But when we're, you know, there's, there's a cost to the environment and everything, the more parking spaces we have, so.
I agree with you, but sometimes they have big events and there is nowhere else to park. It, they, you have to be able to accommodate their holiday party or whatever.
So, but anyway, getting back to the one thing I care about is making sure we have enough parking racks that would encourage these kids that are coming, you know, and I'm not sure six is going to be enough, but, you know, we, we do need more than than just three.
I agree.
You can propose an amendment.
Yeah.
Or another condition of approval.
Okay.
Having seen the facility and having seen it yesterday with this proposed parking area, the gravel parking area full, there, there were frankly volunteers all over the place. Throughout all the buildings, I could see the, the building labeled visitor's center was chock-a-block with people yesterday. In all of the rooms, there's a sort of an office off to one side that has four or five desks in it, very crowded. And, and, and the spay and neuter clinic and cat storage, cat kennels building was, was full and busy. And the third building, the one to the east end, is mostly dog kennels. And there were people around that taking care of the dogs, so I can understand where there would be a lot more people than you might think. And I went back and looked at, at parking requirements, ten, two, fourteen, oh, five, and I found that the standard that was in the staff report of one parking space for every two hundred and fifty square feet not only applies to offices, but it also applies to kennels. I was, I was shocked to see parking requirements for kennels.
Somebody's got to go-
But it's, it's there. And, and I very much understand the need for more parking and I very much understand the need for more office and operational space, if you will. So I would be in favor of going with this. I think adding another requirement for additional bike parking, and what was the other topic, Lucas, that we?
Landscaping. So I looked up the landscaping standards and it's Article Twelve, so it'd be Title Ten, Chapter Two.
Article Twelve.
Article Twelve.
Or just a, a condition of approval that specifies compliance with the landscaping ordinance?
Yeah, I-
But is that even necessary?
It's a requirement regardless.
Are people required to meet the municipal code, whether we call out specific sections of the code or not?
This project, this project triggers the requirements of this landscape, these landscape standards, so.
So a, an additional-
As a comfort level, the commission could certainly add that as a condition, it's still a requirement as we go through plan check, so, either way.
Gray water, is that something that needs to be made a condition? It's not automatic.
Yeah, it's not required.
Okay.
If it is something that they opt to do, there's the plumbing code through, through a building code that, that then provides the guidelines and parameters in which to work with.
So we need to make it a condition?
I think it should be made a condition that we're going to have a gray water system.
That there be a gray water system in the, in the new building.
That meets the plumbing code, I guess, is.
Yeah, it'd be the plumbing code.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's three potential additional conditions of approval.
Right.
Thoughts among the commissioners? So we've got additional bicycle parking, we've got the landscaping, compliance with the landscaping ordinance and addition of a gray water system otherwise unspecified in the new proposed building. in the new proposed building. Gray water systems say you can use this part of the wastewater for gray water and this part of the wastewater is not gray water. So I think asking for a gray water system pretty well defines.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. We don't need to specify the specifics, cause the plumbing code.
I would leave it as general as you can, so it gives them the.
Yeah.
Forethought to figure out how to make that work out.
And I would encourage them to build in as many bike racks as it makes sense wherever it is you're putting them. I mean, more is probably.
At least three more.
Yeah. Yeah.
And how many they, big figure that would, would be, uh, got space for and be useful. That's a pretty min- de minimis cost, I would think.
So do we want, do we need to come up with, I think we need to come up with language right now if we're gonna add conditions of approval. I presume they'd go in after, after number four?
So.
Public, before public works?
Yeah, typically we put those conditions at the end to identify and specify that those conditions were.
After the legal requirements?
Yep, at the very end. So it identifies and specifies that those conditions were added.
Twenty-one through twenty-three.
Yep, that way we're not fudging with the numbering system already. It remains the same and we just add those numbers at the end. And then we, you typically put a highlight identifying that the commission conditions are as follows. Um, identifying that the three conditions, the bicycle parking, compliance with landscape standards, which is Title ten, Chapter two, Article twelve, and then the gray water system, I think all three of those, we can craft language um, similar to the way in which we typically format it. If that's the, the will of this commission, which would require recommendation second, obviously.
Okay, well, let's, let's get the sense of the commission line. Let's call, let's call twenty-one the additional bike parking.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah.
Did everybody, three more, three more bike racks?
So, minimum?
So six total is what I'm, is what I'm hearing, is a minimum.
Minimum.
That's the floor.
If they can fit more in.
Encourage them to look for more.
Minimum of three more bike racks, number two is compliance with the landscaping ordinance. Yep, okay with everybody?
Yep.
Yeah.
And third is a gray water system in the proposed new structure.
Correct.
I do have a question. On atta- in Attachment A, page five of seven, regarding the fire, uh, department standards? Seventeen and nineteen. I, it sound, I, I need you to explain that to me, why they're both there. It seems to me that in seventeen, you're saying that all of the, uh, standards that apply in Ojai, in other words, that already exist in our code. But in nineteen, it's saying compliance with everything Ventura wants. And I think there might be something, um, in conflict there.
I agree. Um, so the first one says, "All conditions of the Ventura County Fire Prevention Division of the Ventura County Fire Division shall be met only to the extent those condition, those standards apply to the city of Ojai." That seems, that seems reasonable, appropriate, certainly within the parameters of.
Condition nineteen does not appear to be necessary.
Well, I would actually say the way in which it's written is almost, is almost superseding seventeen, which seventeen is the, is the overriding and overarching standard, yes.
So.
So I.
So delete, delete nineteen?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Is that our normal way of dealing with the fire? The only things that the city has approved?
There are a couple of differences.
I know we've had a big dispute about the, the sprinklers and.
Well, the city council decided to accept and adopt some, but not all, of the fire protection division standards.
And then this, this, the fire department said, "We can override that," so that, that whole dispute, obviously.
I don't wanna get into semantics.
The city council.
That's a dispute outside planning commission plan.
If we can get rid of nineteen, I'll be happy.
That's appropriate.
So that's four, four amendments to the resolution.
One additional one is number seven, instead of it saying exist.
Yeah, it's, yes.
Exits, so it's just switching the S and the T around.
Right, okay. So five amendments to the resolution. All okay with everyone?
Mm-hmm. Good.
Then a motion to approve this resolution as amended would be in order.
This side of the room, it's, it's, your turn.
I'll make a motion.
Too many motions.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, well, let's see.
Approve the, the DRP and the resolution as amended.
Approving the design review permit, DRP two-two-zero-zero-six, for construction of two thousand three hundred and sixty-three square feet emergency center and twenty-nine parking spaces for existing Ventura County Humane Society complex located at four oh two Bryant Street.
We're not gonna let him do this anymore.
Four conditions that we just stated.
Five.
Five conditions we stated.
Okay.
Second.
Second, very good. Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? All right, Brian, would you call the roll on item two and the resolution as amended?
Quillacy?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
And Starkweather?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go forth and do good things.
Thank you.
All right, item three, priorities of planning commission and the community development department. Here we are again.
Yay, does this look like a familiar item?
Nothing has moved anywhere, up or down.
They've been highlighted, though.
I, so that's the thing. I, I think it's best that they stay where they're at and that we continue to highlight, so I can provide updates to this body in terms of where we're at. Where we're, where we're at in, in this process. So it's, uh, it's interesting because there's a lot of movement going on with the three items that I've highlighted here in bold. And, um, I think we can expect. So let me just start from the bottom here, Title ten, update VMU zoning. I think we can expect to see that in the very near term.
You've already recommended to the city council, you're saying.
No, we have not recommended, we have not recommended this one to city council yet. We have discussed it in two different forms. Um, one was just identifying it through a staff report, the second was bringing in the redline versions for Articles five and six. Now we're gonna be bringing forward a, um, a draft ordinance. That's what, that's what this body. Correct. I think it's important that we just kinda go through that process, uh, step by step, because the items that we're gonna see, like for instance, the general plan update, um, is gonna be another one that this body's gonna be seeing in the near term. Um, I have staff working on that one as well. A lot of different pieces. This is one, as I had mentioned before, advanced, um, planning projects are currently in a logjam. I think we're moving in the right direction to get that logjam unjammed. Uh, and that's why I'm highlighting these three. The formula business ordinance, uh, we're working through a timeline. And I'm not really sure at this point, uh, that that timeline's gonna be something that we, that we see before this body, before the end of the year. Just looking at the logistics of that timeline. So I just wanted to make that, you aware of that, cause I was seeing it potentially going faster. But looking at it and kind of just slowing it down, we have the time to meet with the public, get that input, and then have it come before this body versus bringing the, bringing the body of the community here. Let's, let's do that in kind of a, a neutral format.
You wanna have a public workshop on?
Uh, I don't wanna call it a workshop. I don't like the, the word workshop in that format. Community input, maybe, is the, is a better way to, to see it.
Town hall meeting?
Yeah, the, that's probably a, a good way to put it. I think that's something the community definitely reacts to.
It's gonna be a public meeting.
Not a public meeting. No, 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 not a public meeting. It's similar to what we did with the general plan update, where it was providing information, getting feedback.
Not a public hearing.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing.
I didn't meant hearing, it's just, it's gonna be a public meeting.
Yes. And I'm okay with that. I don't want it to be something where it's a hearing, where we're doing, we're required to be noticing and there's some sort of vote. None of that is taking place.
Concerned that, that, that beyond, be beyond just the businesses meeting with them, in other words.
Initially, that's what, that's what I was looking at and strategizing, but realizing and recognizing that it really should be the community's input, uh, beyond just the businesses.
More of like a workshop kinda thing?
I don't wanna call it a workshop.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, all right.
I think it's a, a community, a community forum is probably a better, a better format.
Yeah, that sounds good.
As I recall.
Sorry, I'm using other terms. I don't wanna call it a workshop. I think that's the problem, is that it's not gonna be a breakout, there's not gonna be breakout groups. That's not what I'm envisioning with this. But definitely getting input from the community is, is critical. Similar to a workshop, but not, not going in that.
So you'll make some kind of presentation about alternatives and that sort of thing?
Yes, there'll definitely be presentation and Q and A for sure. We're working through that right now.
Formula business came before this body, I think at a time, perhaps, when I was the only one of the five of us.
No.
First time that it came up, maybe, maybe Mr. Trent was here as well.
It was like a little over a year ago.
No, it's been longer than that. It's been longer than that, but.
We've been talking about it.
That we had, we had really two issues that came up with the people that spurred the first look at this. One was digital marketing and one was common ownership.
Yeah.
Of, of multiple differently named entities. And are those, and, and one of the reasons that we continued it off calendar was that we did not have a good definition or complete understanding of digital marketing, at least. Is that something that?
Well, just to remind this body, it was, there was aspects that were recommended to city council so that we could then, um, continue the moratorium through, mm, I wanna say April, no, uh, August of next year. So we've basically got, this is our last round with the moratorium still in place for the community input, for the business, businesses to provide input and direction, and then to take that information, weigh it, and then bring it before this body.
Okay.
So. So I was thinking initially that the formula business would potentially be for this body, but I really do think it's gonna be, um, we're gonna be seeing the Title ten and general plan update elements, um, before this body first.
Well, I, I agree, it makes sense to have those kind of workshops first, rather than having a bunch of people coming here and.
Trying to, I'm trying to help out this body.
Form, form first.
Yep.
Let's talk about the concepts first.
Yeah, let's get, uh.
I can't guarantee that it won't be a full room, but at least there'll be an informed full room uh, versus pitchforks and whatnot, so.
And, and the general plan update elements, which ones now? We're gonna talk about safety. We already talked about housing long ago.
So why is that listed?
Last time we had a meeting at Kent Hall, we had, we had transportation or circulation. And I can't remember, safety, maybe?
Right, there was safety and at some point.
Transportation and land use.
True, transportation, okay, so we haven't done safety.
We were talking about the workshop in, in August, right?
The one we just had.
Land use, transportation, and safety, correct.
Oh, safety and that, okay.
Yep, well, referred to as circulation. Just so this body's aware, I think.
Just wondering which of the elements you plan to bring back? Or is it all of them?
Uh, it's all three. That's what you're potentially gonna be seeing, um, and potentially more information. I'm, we've received a summary and draft at this point from the consultant, and I was hoping to share some of the information tonight, just kind of like a teaser. Uh, the summary's much longer than anticipated and it's not an easy read, so I'm trying to work with them to, to boil it down a little bit.
Eventually you'll show us where environmental justice is sprinkled throughout.
That's gonna be through the policies, yes. You'll see that. I think we're gonna try, remember, okay. This body, not this entire body, had heard this statement, but I'll just, I'll put it out there for this entire body. When sustainability was a hot ticket item in the early two thousands, it was a buzzword. Everybody was talking about sustainability. It's not as sustainability, all caps. It was talked about. Everybody was looking at ways in which to, to, um.
To talk about it.
To talk about it in different aspects. When general plans were updated during that time, they, a lot of cities came up with strategies, consultants came up with strategies to earmark when it was a sustainable policy. I anticipate the same thing to be done for my environmental justice, so you're not sitting there searching through the policies wondering which ones are covering environmental justice, when in fact, the policies that have some sort of a earmark are then, um, identifying this specific policy and this specific element is addressing environmental justice. So it's not like looking through a dictionary essentially, right? So there's some simplicity to it, and I've already talked to the consultant about strategies in that way. And they've, they've already been thinking about it as well, so just know that it's not gonna be one where it gets floated through. We're gonna have an opportunity to kinda take a closer look at it.
So you've been given a draft, but you're saying it's too long and complicated.
The summary from the Aug-, yeah, the summary from the August second.
No, no, you said that you, you'd gotten some, a draft, but you wanted the, the consultant's was too long and complicated.
That's the summary.
That's the summary.
Summary of the August meeting?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I would like to see that.
The element update.
It's a draft right now. I, I cannot provide it until it's a final.
You received it, it becomes a public document.
Not as a draft. Not as a draft.
I don't see how the planning director should be reviewing something that we don't see.
It, it's still a, uh, document in progress, so, um, you know.
Correct.
City officials are protected.
Working papers.
It says double process privilege, draft process privilege in order so that, um, city staff can, um, especially at the executive level, the highest levels, can throw around ideas, um, and have the freedom and creativity to think outside the box.
So the consultant is only working for the staff, not for the commission?
That's not a true statement.
They work for the city.
I just wanna make sure that that's not a true statement.
Yes, yeah, that's, let's correct that. They, they work for the city and on behalf of the city.
Yes.
You represent the city as far as planning, we're the elected body.
And you, you would be, just, I don't wanna get into an argument over this, but just so that I'm, just so that we're clear, when it's a draft document, it's currently under review, making sure that all of the, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. When you're seeing it as a final doc- draft, we've had a chance to review it, meaning staff's had a chance to review it and doing our due diligence before this body sees it as a final. Even as a final, this body as well as council could look at it and say, "These things still are missing." Or, "I remember seeing this on this specific, why isn't this covered?" It's the same thing as the vision and guiding principles that went before this body and city council. I think we debated it for three and a half hours, a four-page document. This one's much longer than that, so I'm trying to sort through it right now myself. So, anyway.
All right. Um, one of, I guess we can.
What is general, what's the update? The affordable housing was submitted to C D, C H D, what is?
HCD.
HCD, yeah.
Yep.
What is, what is, why is this listed here?
Affordable housing goals and policies, so that is something that still will be coming forward as a part of the general plan update. So there's, there's gonna be a final review of those policies to ensure that they're consistent with each of the elements as they're, as they're revised.
Like the action plan portion of the housing element? Because that was the proposed, how we're gonna carry that out, is that what?
I would, I would say ensuring consistency with all policies throughout. It's the environmental document, it's the, the new revised policies that come forward for the land use, circulation, um, safety elements. There's certainly gonna be a, a little bit of a, uh, a facelift on some of those. When you do that, you've gotta make sure from an environmental standpoint that they're consistent throughout all the elements. And that's why the affordable housing goals and policies are included in here as well.
Even though HCD has approved either by action or inaction, the current housing element for the next seven years or whatever it is, eight years, the city is allowed to make annual updates to it. And I presume we'll see those before they go out. I think that's part of what this is.
And when I was at that planning training, uh, we were presented a whole array of new legislation that has come down on both. that has come down on both housing and climate, which the two kind of interact actually.
Sure.
Uh, so I would think that that'd be something we need to.
Consultants need to make sure is in the updates.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they're throwing stuff at us right and left, as you might say.
Absolutely, and it's, the, the safety element is probably the one that's seeing the biggest change, changes. I mean, housing is certainly the biggest one that's being discussed at the state level, almost on a daily basis right now.
I noticed the Title X update, the V M U zoning, that's the Article Five, Article Six business. I recall some time ago, there was a request, maybe it hasn't been a formal request for rezoning of the property along Montgomery Street from commercial to V M U. Is that, is that yet considered by the city to be a case that we will be taking a look at, or is it just, there's been some rumblings out there?
You're talking about the, the area that is.
The area from Aliso to Oak or thereabouts, both sides of Montgomery.
Right, that area was actually one of the, one of the focal areas with the workshop, with the general plan update. Um, and we've since received feedback on that. So that's really kind of folded into the general plan update and not something independent. Meaning there isn't an official application to.
But it's specific rezoning of property.
Mm-hmm.
And that would come to this body before the city council, before the actual change took place.
Yeah, you're putting zoning before the land use. The land use aspect, which is the, a part of the general plan, which is the, really the kind of, the roadmap for future is really what's discussed first, which is the reason why the workshop and one of the work, workstations, I want to say it was either three or, or two, had that specific discussion. And it showed a map and then highlighted, you know, the east and west sides, and then gave a couple of different scenarios, if you guys recall.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't think of the la-, the city land use map and zoning map, both of which are, you know, to be updated.
Yep.
Were, were actually published as a part of the general plan?
Yeah, the land use map is what informs the general plan, and then your zoning map is what informs the zoning code. Both of them have to be consistent per state law.
Yeah, and they will be part of the general plan update?
Yes.
Land use.
Those two maps.
For, as a land use, yeah, as a land use map.
The land use map, okay.
Correct.
And that may force us to change the zoning map potentially.
For consistency per state law, yes.
So now, you mentioned that, um, the housing element, annual update, or can be an annual update?
It is an update. We have, we have an A P R, an annual progress report that's required, both for the housing element as, as a part of the requirements per state law, and then we also have a general plan A P R, annual progress report that's required at the same time. Both are required to be submitted to HCD.
So the general plan covers all of the general plan as an update?
Correct.
And so I guess as we get new legislation that's requiring, uh, new, new changes, we have to incorporate those on a yearly basis, or not?
Not necessarily, only when you do a, uh, a major update. It's typically when those are required. Which is the reason why, right now, the safety element is, is seeing an extreme overhaul because of all the new legislation that's come online over the last twenty years or so. The same thing is true with land use, or, sorry. The same thing is true with the, yeah, with the land use element as well as circulation. Any changes that have come through, um, state legislation, through S B, S B bills or Senate, Assembly bills, those all have to be incorporated within, um, the general plan moving forward. Same thing is true with housing element as well. So we adopted it, city council adopted it, uh, October twelfth of last year. It then went on HCD. HCD gave us comments back. Um, I've already talked to the consultant, Veronica Taman Associates. Looks like there isn't any significant changes. It's more explaining the way in which it was written. Um, if there are significant changes, then those would have to come back to city council for re-adoption.
So if there are insignificant ones, you'll just change the document and?
No, even, even the insignificant ones, any sort of those changes, we would be bringing back to the city council.
If you change the wording of the general plan, it's got to be reviewed.
Yep, exactly.
It's hard to believe that HCD would not come back with something, but.
Let me just tell you, HCD, uh, my last round of, of dealing with them eight years ago was much easier than what I'm, I'm seeing right now. They are, they may be staffed up and they're looking under every rock right now, which is kind of.
So at that, at that training conference I went to, because some, that, there were HCD people there, and they were talking about how they're going to be much more aggressive.
Well.
Enforcing things.
Housing laws are constantly moving targets.
Particularly, they're going to be more aggressive, because, uh, they've been pretty much ignored by most cities. Up until now, on housing, anyway.
Aggressive, I would say yes. I question, I don't want to get into debate on that right now. Sorry.
They're saying that's what they said.
I get it, yeah, I see what you're saying. Uh, it's just the comments that we're seeing right now, I look at the report and I'm like, it's on page sixty-eight of one hundred and twenty. It's clearly identified, and, and then the response is, yeah, but you need to go into more detail, but they're not giving us that detail. So it's like, kind of a moving target to a certain.
Rock isn't shiny enough, go polish it.
Exactly. So that's the struggle that we've got. I, we're working through it right now. I've been meeting with the consultant on an irregular basis to try to understand it, so.
Well, if there's any major changes, then we'll see them. This commission will see.
Significant changes could very well come back to this body. Um, more than likely, it would just be something council will be seeing.
All right, let's move on to, uh, agenda item four, upcoming agenda items.
Okay, I've got the floor again, okay, good.
You have the floor, sir.
Um, we have two, okay, so I'm seeing two items on here for October fifth. I can tell you right now, the first item has been pushed to a different meeting. I just met with, um, the planner on that, and it's not, it's not quite ready. We were hoping to have it ready. You would have seen it, um, potentially on this meeting. It, it is not. Gables very well could be. Uh, we're working through right, that right now, like, as I'd said before, I think at the last meeting. Um, we had just received new information. I'm sorting through that right now and just making sure.
And that's a concept review, it's not a decision.
Review, no decision, but you can expect that the room will be half full of individuals. It, it will be a hot topic for sure. Um.
Commissioner Murphy will be out there somewhere.
Oh, you're within five hundred feet, that's right. So that brings me to the next question. On the fifth, are there any commissioners that will not be here?
I was going to New Zealand, but I canceled.
I would say let's check our calendars, make sure that if, if for instance, we have one member who's not going to be able to, to be here.
An in-city member, yeah.
Yep, that's an in-city member. Um, we still have to make sure we have two and two, so Trent, Quillacy.
Both have to be here.
Both need to be here.
Yep.
I made that, I made that error once, I'm not going to do it again. It only takes once.
There before.
Yep, um, I would also note that there's a good possibility that there's going to be another item on for the fifth. Um, and it relates to S B L overlay potentially at a site. I can't specify which site at this point, but just know that there's a good chance that that item will be on for the fifth. Um.
It gives an address.
Um, oh, shoot, it's on for the nineteenth. Oh, that's great, I can talk about it. Okay, so at least I can get some general information without getting my hands slapped. The S B L overlay site for the American Legion, which is eight forty-three East Ojai, that's the east end on the south side of Ojai Avenue. Um, this actually went before city council. City council asked for commission, um, feedback. That was back in June. I've now got the information that I need for me to take it forward. Um, general information, and we'll talk it through. A lot.
I'm surprised there was enough information to have it agendized by city council, but not enough for you to prepare something for planning commission.
Wasn't that like a concept?
It was, it was brought forward by two, by two council members at that time.
Ah, okay.
So at that point, very limited information.
Information there.
And at that point, the council got to chew the fat on whether or not they wanted to kick it to a commission or just let it ride. So they decided to kick it to this commission, this body.
Right.
We don't kick things to this commission, we hand them over.
Thank you. They were properly placed.
Kick them down the road, or we don't want to deal with them, but we hand these over.
There was a handoff that took place, there we go.
And, and so when that item comes before us, we'll see what actually, what piece of ground.
Yep.
Is included in that request.
What piece of ground is included, um.
Because there's four buildings there.
Right, there's some, right.
Oh, yeah.
We, one, two.
There's two long, narrow buildings at the back of the property. There's the help of Ojai Second Helpings, and there's Ojai Hair Company.
Yep.
So there's four buildings on the property. I'm just curious what, I'll be curious to see what the ask is for, for an overlay.
Great, I can't get into the details.
You could wait till two Fridays for that.
And it says V M U discussion.
Yeah, the V M U discussion, I think you can expect that to be on for the fifth. Uh, it will be a.
Article Five, Article Six business?
Yes, it will be a discussion. I want this body to see it first, and then we'll schedule it for an official public hearing. You want it to just come straight forward? We could, I could still hold it on the nineteenth, and we could just do it at a public hearing and, and call it a day. Um, I was thinking a two-step process, but if you're comfortable with just, we've already seen it twice, to be fair. Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
Appropriate to just have a public hearing and vote it up or down and be done with it.
Um, because it'd be a recommendation to city council.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
And you want to put that on the fifth, or?
No, I can't put it on the fifth.
It's, the nineteenth is fine.
Yeah.
It, it said discussion rather than.
No, it'll, it'll be, if it remains on the nineteenth, it'll be a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And then work plan and general plan update, those are standard practices to have on here, so.
And lots of things piling up on Mora's desk.
There are, um.
Starting to look like a year ago when we had a log jam.
Yeah, but I wouldn't say that this is, oh wow, I didn't realize that OA Mountain, okay, yeah, I did know that. OA Mountain Farms is officially submitted. Um, so there are more items actually than what we've got listed here. These are actually closer to moving forward, though.
Where's the Adamson property? Are we done with that?
No, they haven't come back.
We're not even close to done with that.
Nope, it'll be coming back. We continue to get new information, so we're sorting through that.
With the request for information, they haven't come back with it, so far as I know.
No, no, we're working through that with the, with the property owner right now.
He still wants to sell?
Yes. That is, that is.
Do we have design review for every two stories?
Move the lot line.
Yeah, every two stories.
Every two stories?
Every two story in a single family or yes, or V M U, yes.
That seems a little strange to me, but I don't know.
Well, yeah, the history on that is people sitting at this chair weren't reviewing it properly, so. That's the reason.
Your chair?
Sitting here, yeah, at the position that I'm in.
There's a, there's a specific example I could. I'll leave that off the table.
Commissioner Trent is, is clearly has more information even than I do.
Leave the names out to protect.
A lot of time for, very little, but I guess maybe it is important, I don't know.
I think, look, when this body has, I don't know if I can, okay, I, I'll just thirty seconds. When this body reviews second stories, I think it's, it's appropriate, because there's view shed and the, not view shed per se, but views that are potentially looking into someone else's property. There's design issues that we've got, that we've got to try to tackle. Um.
So do we get a view of the other people's property? Like, do you take a picture so we could make that decision? I mean.
From, from a non-existent second floor?
Well, you can do that, just like he can do a computer generation of a room.
Look, what we, what we saw.
Whitman's interiors there.
Yeah, I know.
Buildings that don't exist.
We're going to be deciding whether the view shed's good from the upper story.
There's V, there's V R, there's V, the virtual reality really kind of takes, takes the cake on some of that stuff.
Also look at the neighborhood characteristics, if it doesn't really apply.
I see.
Yep, absolutely. Just think about a modern second story, but a craftsman style first story, does that make any sense to you? That happens in L.A. I've seen it, so, anyway.
Okay. Um, is there a director's report? Anything else you want to add?
Nothing else. I, I feel like I've talked too much.
Okay, commission members' reports, any, any other tidbits?
I don't know if these are tidbits, but I just had a couple of quick questions. I know these two things came up tonight, and I'm sure they're going to come up over and over again. Um, parking, I know we have it on our, our items here for agenda, just, and I know the council's looking at it, but just curious if there's any movement on that?
No movement at this point.
No movement, okay, that's fair.
And, and the reason why there's no movement is because it's like a, a chess game. I'm waiting, we're waiting for the council.
Right.
Before we hear back.
There's an ad hoc committee.
Yep.
On parking, yeah.
Yep.
And then the, uh, the second one that came up tonight, again, uh, tree ordinance, water efficient landscape guidelines, any?
That is an interesting one. I've, uh, recently had a couple of conversations with a couple of arborists. Have raised some concerns, things that I wasn't necessarily aware of in the ordinance. I mean, I'm aware of some of, some of the aspects, but we found workarounds. Um, one is replacement of trees in certain circumstances. While I, while the ordinance doesn't allow me to require it, I always do the ask. I have staffed through the ask, and nine times out of ten, I have, I have applicants saying, yes, I'm going to replace it, and this is what I'm going to replace it with. And it's like, great, like we saw tonight. I can't, yeah, I can't require it, but I can certainly always do that ask. There's other things that have come up that I wasn't necessarily aware of, which certainly I think require some, some discussion. I can't go into them right now because I'm literally having the conversation with the arborist as we speak, so. But it is kind of an interesting target that I wasn't even aware of, so, anyway.
Well, shouldn't the target be dealing with climate change resilience and how we, as people are coming to new applications for
Yeah, that's why it's on here.
That, what we end up with is much more drought tolerant landscaping and trees.
We, we have it on here as a discussion item, because in the code, we have it, but it's, it's strongly encouraged.
Yep.
Not necessarily something that's a requirement.
But it's, yeah, but we're entering a different, uh, paradigm here.
I know, again, that's why it's on here.
Chapter, chapter two, Article Twelve is the landscape ordinance.
Yeah.
You may wish to read through it and see if there are changes you wish to make.
Well, I'm not a landscaper. I'm not sure I would be knowledgeable enough to say what the changes are, but I do think that that's something that we ought to get somebody's advice about how to modify this.
We are not short on experts in this city regarding arborists and landscape.
It's not me.
Yes, you just saw one tonight, um, and there are, just with, just with that individual and, and his company, there are others as well.
We had one on the commission until.
Yes.
May.
Yes.
Which is another reason.
I have not reached out to that individual, but that could, where we'll be.
She, she'd be more than willing to.
Yep.
I have reached out to that individual as Alex De Silva and I are working through additional details of chapter of Title X to try to fix things.
Right, so you're working on the, the roundup of the final errata pieces, and Alex is working on putting that together.
And Alex is working.
Roundup when you're talking about.
I shouldn't use, I strike that word from the, the statements that I just made. It's a good point.
The collection of.
The, um, we're collecting the data necessary to ensure that we have an ordinance that makes sense.
But you should read through Article Twelve.
I think I have, actually, but I'm not a landscaper, so I'm not sure.
Well, it's Article Twelve as well as, yeah, there's the, um, tree ordinance as well.
I'm not sure where that is.
That's like title.
It's not part of Article Twelve?
It's not.
But there are plenty of model guidelines about developing, you know, up-to-date or, you know, landscaping ordinance to deal with climate change and so forth. I've certainly looked at those, but again, I'm not technically competent to evaluate which is better.
Sure, I think the state actually came up with some general guidelines that tackled that as well. But Ojai, I think, actually went further, just to be fair.
That's good. Go even further.
All right, thank you.
Um, Brian, do we have a city council liaison here tonight?
No, we don't.
Okay. Then there being no other obvious business before the commission at. Then there being no other obvious business before the commission at 7:51, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
I told my wife it's the.
Another early one.